Alright, welcome to the June 19th, 2018 Sunderland Elementary School Committee. At 6:10 or so because of me. So, we start today with, I believe, the reorg. And so, I will turn it over to Patty while we take us through that.
Great. Okay, so we need nominations for Chair of the school committee. So, we need someone to make a motion and a second to nominate someone for Chair.
I will not be offended if somebody is interested in being Chair. Don't... Happy to continue or not continue, honestly.
How long you been Chair? Long time, I think?
Uh-huh.
You been Chair a long time, yeah?
Uh, three... What is it? What do you think?
Four.
Four?
Yeah.
Was it before? Before, yeah.
Is there anybody who has an interest?
Honestly, um, it's, um... There's like a couple of things that, other than, you know, running the meetings, you know, running the agenda in the meetings, there's not a lot of extra duties or responsibilities of the Chair, you know.
To pull off now, then?
Yeah. Occasionally, occasional, like, you know, you know, making, if there's something like warrants that urgently need to be signed.
Pass them down, they can start signing them. We should've done that while you were not here, but it wasn't paying attention.
So, um...
I don't have any shit at all. I'm still wrestling with trying to get through Greg's softball and fire department on Tuesday nights as well. I got one more of your softball and after that, I think, like, things clear up for me, but I have no interest at this point.
Greg, you've been Vice Chair for how many years now?
I know. And if I didn't have stuff going on in my family, I would be, I was doing it. I mean, I still could.
Yeah.
I mean, my own... I'm just not... Here's what you would have to understand. If I become Chair, I am going to be not super reliable as far as showing up on short, you know, I may have stuff come up on short notice.
Right.
Other than that, I could do it. So, it's possible. I don't know, I mean, we also have, we have Maisy, we have Peter, we have other options. I don't know.
Maisy doesn't want it, she's shaking her head.
Maisy doesn't want it.
I mean, I could do it. I haven't been on committee very long, and I don't know if that's a problem or not. I'm not dying to do it, even though, you know, I didn't know if you have a bunch of stuff you do outside the committee in terms of regular, you know, meetings with any of the administration or anything like that.
Honestly, I mean, you know, no more or less than I did before I was Chair, so, I mean, occasionally checking in on agenda items, but usually that's stuff that, you know, you know, if there's particular things, we're discussing that in the meeting before.
Right.
So, um, so it, yeah. There isn't, I mean, you know, again, I think it's kind of...
I mean, I guess I would say I'm not looking for it, but I would give it if nobody else wanted.
Well, what about, I mean, for this year, we could do, if you wanted, if you took Chair and I was Vice Chair, so any of those times, and you drop it on me, and then you be, or, you know, potentially you would be ready in a year or whatever to the next cycle, or, you know, it's not like it can't happen partway through the year too, if we just, you know, if we need to.
So, you're, you're, so through...
I'm nominating Greg Gatchock.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Okay, so, DF, Keith, and nominate GG. And are there any other nominations? Any discussion on that? Okay, so we'll close nominations and we will take a vote to make Greg Gatchock Chair of the Sunderland Elementary School for the 18-19 school year. Everyone, aye or nay?
Aye.
Aye.
Go 5-0-0. Okay, so now Greg, the meeting gets turned over to you. So, you have, do you have your agenda?
No.
Alright, now you're gonna take mine.
Outstanding.
Alright, so the next thing we're gonna do is take, do the same thing. Would you pass this down to him?
Yep.
It is, um, so now you, what you would do now is take nominations for Vice Chair.
Indeed. Do I hear any nominations for Vice Chair of the Sunderland School Committee?
So, I mean, if you, I mean, again, if you want, because I'm familiar, and when you can't be there for now, and then, and then we'll start to...
It's okay, it's okay.
Yeah.
Someone needs to nominate.
Nominate. Go ahead.
I'll nominate Doug.
Outstanding.
Second, Keith, then? DF? Any, oh, then you have to have any other, or other nominations?
Other nominations? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yay. Alright, let's see.
See others, do you have that, if, on page like 3 or 4, it's got the, then there's Secretary?
Yeah. And actually, she's got it all written out, so I can help you Greg on this. So, now you would need a motion and a second to nominate someone for Secretary of the school committee.
I have a sheet.
You got it right there, that's the sheet he's working off of, this guy.
This one. Alright, so we need a, let's see, now I see.
And currently, our, say, Maisy Shaw is our Secretary.
Indeed. Looking for a nomination for Secretary.
I mean, Maisy.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Who seconded it, then?
I did.
So, discussion, now that you need a vote?
Out of the nominees? Alright, discussion?
Vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the next ones are appointments that you make.
I make appointments?
Yes.
Alright.
So, right, currently, our Frontier rep is Keith McFarland. And I don't know who our, I, I think, I don't think we have a...
Yeah, Michelle, Michelle was the Frontier rep.
Peter, that might be a good one for you.
Yeah, no idea what it is.
We belong to a collaborative, and you go to their board meetings, and so every member town sits on that board for the collaborative, and I guess they feed you, which is always a major, and they meet like on Tuesday nights, and it's...
Once every two months.
Once every two months.
And through the, right, and then they're also off for the summer. So, it's not a ton of meetings. I did it for years. It's interesting, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, the collaborative provides services to, it's Hampshire, it used to be just Hampshire, now it's Hampshire and Franklin. Training programs, there's lots of stuff.
Lot of PD for our teachers.
Yep, professional development stuff.
They hold a statewide contract for educating children in DYS services.
Yep.
They also do, they do, they have special ed programs that we send some of our kids to.
Have you been blowing the here, Keith?
I didn't know that...
No, Keith's the Frontier rep.
No, he got here under Collaborative.
It's listed, yeah.
I don't know my name. I don't know how this...
I think maybe, well...
When Michelle left?
Yeah, my name got put in there, because I looked at that, I was like, I didn't know that that was me.
So, before we get there, the Frontier rep, do you want to, Keith, can you...
I'm happy continuing to do it.
Alright, let's point to the proud Frontier rep.
Okay.
And same for the Union 38 voting representatives, that also...
You appoint them.
Alright. Interest? You already got one vote.
So, there's three votes?
There's three votes.
I mean, I, I think it's good for you, for the Chair, for sure.
For sure.
And, um, but, and I don't care, I, you know, I'll go to the meetings, I don't, I don't feel compelled to have a vote, so.
Care for a vote?
It doesn't seem to make a difference so far, so I don't care.
We even attend, so, I mean, that's your...
I do attend, so...
It's good, because you go. I mean, when you have a voting member that doesn't show up, you're moving, Sunderland's losing a little bit of power.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I'm happy doing it if you want, but I have no need for it.
Well, you're in there now.
Sounds like a nomination here.
No, but then who was not gonna, who was the three people gonna be? You and...
Yeah, that's fine.
So, then it'll be you, Greg, and Maisy?
Okay.
As voting members?
Okay.
And so, we still have the collaborative representative, and Maisy is currently the school council liaison.
Maisy, you care to continue on school council?
Yeah, that's fine.
Sounds good. Collaborative. Now we get back to the sales job.
You wanna go back and do that, Doug? You've got some experience. I'm just not sure, I mean, I, pardon my interest, I end up going to a lot of town, you know, town meetings and stuff like that, and so I don't feel like I'm dodging my duties or something. I'll do it if you want me to do it, okay, but it's not really my interest.
Okay.
Whereas the stuff I go to is, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's useful, but it's also something that I, you know, have an interest in, and so...
I can try and take it back on the collaborative.
I just don't know, you know, I mean, the only thing is whether I go there and I learn something, but I'm not sure what good I'd do for the school there.
Yeah.
That's my only concern.
One meeting every two months doesn't bother me, that's, that's something that's near on that I could do too, although I'm not gonna be here this summer.
Right.
I don't know that they need...
They'll need this summer.
I know there's a meeting coming up, because they've, they've got a structural deficit right now, so I know there's a meeting coming up. I mean, and that's the other thing, we've got members on the other committees, so if whoever is on this committee doesn't go, we get the information from the other committees that we can report.
Right. So, um, um, yeah, I can take it back on for now, and then I'll, see, maybe I looked at, you know, and if it's not working in my schedule, well, I'll talk and try to recruit somebody else. Okay?
So, if he drops the ball and you start filling in for him?
Left side. Anyone wanna turn policy for collaborative, going once?
Oh, yeah, the policy.
Yeah, yeah. Policy, no, okay. No, but as a teacher, professionally, you'd probably be a great add, whether you're officially there or not, if you bring that into the collaborative.
Okay.
So, you're gonna appoint Keith to the policy?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
It sounds like Doug, we're gonna appoint to the policy, or sorry, that.
No, collaborative.
Doug, the collaborative.
Right.
Alright. Keith may go once in a while, and I don't imagine I'll get anyone else to take policy, so I'll nominate myself.
Okay, so I don't have that feeling now, so make sure you, you write your, circle your name that you're gonna stay.
Yep.
And then, I, is there, on that sheet, is there also the reps for the, uh, do we have to do what you call it this time, negotiation?
I did not see that on this list. Although those are coming up.
Those are coming up, so we'll probably do that in the fall.
Yeah, alright. Yee-haw. Four minutes of the previous meeting that we're at. And obtain a, a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of Tuesday, May 15th?
Uh, so moved?
Second. Outstanding. Take a moment. Any discussion?
Not for me.
No? All in favor?
Aye. Yeah.
I have the executive session minutes, if you can hand those down, and I need to collect them back, they need to be shredded.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're approving the approval of the minutes, yes.
These are now public?
No, we're gonna release them, that's a separate...
So, do we need to go in an executive session to approve them?
Nope.
Okay.
If we're gonna, if we were gonna release them, we would.
Okay.
If you have a specific comment that we have to discuss pertaining to the, this is maybe a separate...
Right. And these are just all, they were just all approving, and so now you're approving the approvals, and then they'll come up for release.
So...
So moved. Outstanding. Sounds like Keith is the second?
I am the second.
Outstanding. All in favor?
Aye. I can't go, I'm...
I'm abstaining. I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, if I could just have those back. I'm trying to fix the order, guys.
Wow.
I love it, there's also the...
It's such a process.
No doubt.
Cafeteria team leader, that we hunted.
You've skipped over financial statements.
There's, there's, there's a, the agenda right there.
I'm also good at keeping you in line.
Outstanding. Financial statements and sign warrants, alright, we're signing away.
Yes, so you have eight warrants tonight, that total 69,737.54, along with the summer payroll warrant, so that we don't have to hunt you down every two weeks to do payroll. But we will be calling people to come and sign warrants in July and August. That's what we do, we come to the main office and sign them, when we get them ready, an email will go out, and whoever, we just need three out of the five, so Keith, I know you're not gonna be around, so we will, we'll still email you, but we won't expect to see you, unless you're on TV catching the shark. I wanna also give you an update on the school lunch program. Right now, we're running a deficit of 5,868.06. At the same time last year, our deficit was only 3,942.8, so I know it looks like we're not going in the right direction, but we did have the one-time consultant cost this year, that was 14,718.64, so if we say, if we were saying we didn't have that one-time cost, we would right now be making a profit of about $8,800. So, our program...
Even if we'd had some salary?
We've got the salary for the shared F, the food director, but that's coming out of our general fund now.
Right, okay.
Okay, so, um...
Okay, okay, gotcha.
So, we're on the right, I, I think we're on the right track. Also, right now, our uncollectible lunch balance is about $4,900, and last year at this time, it was about $5,900, so we're doing a little bit better. So, having, I think having the Meals Plus has helped our reporting be better, and it's helping us collect our debt a little bit better. This year, I'm not going to be recommending that we take money from the general ledger budget to put the school lunch balance whole, because Mr. Gigerian asked a question a couple months ago, that led me down an investigative trail, because he said there was a, there was a balance in school lunch. So, what was happening was... If I asked what the school lunch balance was this year, and I was told $6,500, we would take $6,500 and put it in there. But, what wasn't happening was, the year before, if the bad debt was 5,000, that 5,000's still sitting in that $6,500. She wasn't deducting it out, and it wasn't being deducted out, and I was unaware of that. So, we sort of double paid, so we have a balance in our school lunch program, so I do not think it's necessary this year to use our monies to put them in there, because we are whole right now. And in fact, we got written up, because we have too much money in there, so we're going to be looking to buy a new, I think, a new piece of equipment, and we did a washer and dryer already in there, and we're gonna be looking to buy another piece of equipment. And we've also applied for a grant through the Place 60, we did this last year, and we unfortunately didn't get it. But all this, Mary has applied for a grant for all the schools for us to get some pretty heavy-duty blender, so we can start serving smoothies. So, we're hoping, keeping our fingers crossed, that we get that grant. Mr. Marshewski and I had a conversation, so if you look on page 6, the balance in our general ledger, in our general fund is $107,048.82. The amount of warrants that are applicable to this fund are $27,276.76, which is leaving us about $79,772 to get us through the rest of June. So, there are gonna be bills that come in from today until the end of the year, and so we'll have to take care of those. And then, we talk about what we're gonna do with any leftover funds. So, the things that Ben and I talked about today were definitely replacing the carpet in the front office, it, it, it needs to be replaced. Maybe doing another two rooms of window shades. Boning up on our technology. And the other idea that I had is that we could take some payroll off of school choice and put it on our general fund, and free us up a little bit more cash, and give us a little bit more leeway in case we get any move-in students over the summer that have special needs, because that's what happened. We're dealing in another, with one of our other sister schools, we had a move-in that we didn't budget for, and now we gotta try to find money for next year for kids with some pretty substantial needs. So, um, did you wanna add anything to that, Ben?
Just a slight bit of clarification, for the blinds, it would be to finish the west wing, so more than two rooms. And I don't know what the exact dollar amount was, but I think 2,000 and change to finish the school.
So, that, that was not our priorities, so I don't know if your pri, if the school committee's priority would be first, try to get some money back into school choice, and then do the carpets, and then do the technology, and then do the window shades?
What do you mean by technology?
So, we are, smart boards are falling by the wayside, and they are becoming more and more expensive to replace bulbs, so we wanna start moving to the new generation of smart board, and they have a different name, and I'm not, I'm not, I don't know the technical, technological name of it. So, we're looking at maybe replacing some of those, also getting us more one-to-one devices, so that Ben can have MCAS at more than one grade level at a time, maybe buy some carts for MCAS testing. I'd have to check with Mr. Scott Paul to see where, where he felt the technology money would best be spent here at Sunderland.
We're also looking to add laptop student computers for grades 1 and 2. We start with Google accounts at grade 3, so Chromebooks really don't apply to the under grades. So, what we did this past year, we outfitted all grade 1 through 2 classrooms with five laptops each. And during the workshop model for our classrooms, take math for example, teachers were doing a small group lesson, while others were using Dreambox, others were playing an academic game, and the rotation really was nice. So, we're looking to add a few more laptops in each of those classrooms.
So, that would be a conversation between Ben and Scott as to where they felt the money would best be spent. But if you guys wanna give me, like I said, if, I, I'm gonna say we don't have more than $20,000 left in bills, which would leave us about 60 grand. So, if you say to me, put 20,000 back into school choice, I can do that. And then, use the rest of the money as debt to do technology and get the carpets changed. How much do you think the car, I don't need, I have no idea, because I don't, you're talking about the nurses wing too?
Uh, the nurses office does not have carpet, so it would just be the whole front office.
Front office and your, through your office?
Yeah. And, true.
Got some questions.
Sure.
Seems like the, the blinds is a relatively small cost.
Yeah.
I think the, the carpet would be, again, probably about the same as the blinds, around there, and that's not relatively large. I think the, the smart boards is probably a big cost. I would like to see as much as possible going to school choice. But just a little conversation about smart boards. I do kind of have seen that ebbing of the use of them, and I'm wondering if it would be the best use to invest more money into the second generation of what might fall apart, not necessarily fall apart, but fall by the wayside in a few years. My own personal experience, and it's a little bit different because of the grade level, is much, much less use of the smart boards, which everybody used a lot, because more, it was the bells and whistles and interactive part of it.
The first generation.
Yeah. Projectors, just projecting what's on your laptop screen, it becomes more and more...
That's what I was wondering about, because, I mean, even if, you know, you can have something on, you know, a tablet, that, you know, got an interactive app that, you know, then goes through...
Right.
Do all our teachers have laptops?
Have laptops?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yep.
And it, I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be the laptop, like my, my desktop, I'm using constantly every day, projecting for the kids. Definitely, the, the smart board allows you at times to go up, take out a pen and actually go out and do a little interaction with that, but that's almost gimmicky a little bit. If, if you can hook a laptop up, and it's relatively easy to have an interface with the, with the projector, they can still do as much right on the laptop as they would with like a special colored pencil on it, but, so I'm just wondering if...
It, it does vary from classroom to classroom and teacher to teacher as to how much the interactive tool is used.
And Scott's testing new ones, we've got some demos, and he's testing, he's been using them in his office, and him and Maureen Belche and Stuart, they've all been testing them, and they haven't made a decision yet as to what version they're going to, but if you would like me to find out and email you, I can do that.
But also the bigger issue of like, if a teacher uses a lot and hasn't really adapted their curriculum, you know, that's one thing, and it's like, oh gee, I can get, I mean, I'm kind of going through my notes now too. I know we had issues with the level sensor in the oil, and the issue with the motor for the sewage, I know we were...
It's encumbered.
Sewage is taken care of.
It's taken care of.
It's already encumbered in these numbers before we talk about that.
But the, but the oil tank issues are still out there.
I know, we were in the oil tank issue.
I thought there was, wasn't there something at the last meeting?
The level sensor for the...
There was, um, yeah, and Bob provided us with a, a write-up of a few different options.
Well, he did not give me a PO to encumber.
Oh yeah, I have oil tank and oil delivery service problems. We're gonna move forward on the ejector problems, but we're gonna hold off until June on the oil tank and delivery service and boiler repair and boiler replacement.
So, the boiler repair has been done, and you signed the warrant tonight, and what we did was we asked the town administrator, Sherry Patch, if it was covered by insurance, and it was. So, we paid a thousand dollar deductible, and the town paid and received from the insurance company $3,928, and you signed that tonight.
Fantastic.
So, that was submitted to insurance and covered.
Okay.
But I will, before we do anything, I will check with Bob about the oil tank, because that has not come up on my radar. He did not bring that to my attention. I mean, I know we had a problem with the, the gauge. I know that we had a problem with the gauge, but that was...
I think there was like, I, I forgot to bring the thing with me, but there was like, the page was addressing the issues with the oil tank, and some were, seemed fairly trivial, like the gauge on the top didn't work or something like that. And then, there was also a general issue of age, the age of the tank, and whether there's sufficient defense against possible leakage at some point, and whether we should be doing something, and it was, sounded like, you know, other than the problems with the gauge, but the school was already putting on automatic delivery, so that was gonna be less important. The questions about the age and the possible defenses against leakage was something that was like, you know, it wasn't hitting you right in the face, like now the thing is leaking or something, it was just a concern that down the road, this is, you know, has to be dealt with, and, um, I think that, and it sounded like that was enough money that...
What was enough money?
Well, if they really had to do serious stuff to the oil tank, you know, and, but I don't think the number was given, was it? I wish I'd wrote it on paper with me.
Well, I just sent him an email, he is on vacation, so I just asked him, if he gets back, can you please give me whatever you gave the school committee about the oil tanks, and do, do we wanna encumber anything first for that?
Yeah, that, that would be...
We definitely wanna get the gauge fixed, so without a doubt.
Yeah, right.
Because that's been the hesitancy of our head custodian of going to automatic delivery, because he doesn't want them to overflow the tank, because the gauge isn't working.
Right.
My suggestion would be that we, you know, come to agreement on a number for the, to put, to take off of choi- to put, to take off of choice, which I think is good to do.
Right.
And then, you know, you've heard our things about like, have Paul consider about whether the, whether the smart boards are really the way to go versus other kinds of technology or what teachers are really reliant on them currently and want to, you know, a lot of their lesson stuff works around it and, you know, want to keep that. Anyway, heard some of these things and whatever potential needs with the oil tank and so on and just use, you know, your best judgment with those things that we've talked about.
I was going, I didn't interrupt.
No, I was going to say, turn that into a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I was going to actually recommend the same thing to the school committee. I mean, if we think about over the past few years, rarely have we had a surplus like this.
Yeah.
Right? So, just because we have a surplus doesn't mean we should go wild spending, especially with the pattern that we've seen with school choice and those funds diminishing. So, I mean, I think we need to be, identify what the real issues are and spend the money in those areas, but then also be frugal in a sense and save that money, just because, I mean, we see where it's, where it's going.
Right. And then the only way we can save it is to put it into school choice.
Yeah, which would be great. Because we know what we've got coming still.
And while we were talking.
The overriding passing.
The other thing that hasn't been billed is the last quarter for the central office share of the fourth quarter expenses, so that needs to get filled too, so.
I would just say that, you know, taking back upon passing the override and so on, it wasn't, you know, it was a fairly modest override and it doesn't like, mean, okay, now we've got no problems. What it means is, we've got to be even more careful because we can't go back to that well.
Because we're not going to be going back.
And so, you know, I'm like, yeah, absolutely in favor of, of, you know, doing what we can to restore the balance in the school choice fund because, you know, that's an area where it gives us some flexibility going forward. And I, you know, I just, you know, I keep thinking, I mean, I worry about this stuff and I keep thinking, geez, you know, if we get into budget time this coming winter and we've got, you know, because the way the numbers work out, we're taking 50,000 less out of school choice than we did this time, we have to go to the town and say, well, we've got our normal step increases and, you know, a few other things that are inflation or something like that. And then we go, oh yeah, we need another 50,000 because we don't have the money in school choice. It's not going to, you know, I don't want to be in that situation. So, I think, I think the suggestion here, as far as restoring some money there is great. My sense on the oil tank is that other than the monitoring thing, okay, that these were sort of all part of a pack, I mean, it says here, replacement of oil spill containment at the exterior delivery location.
Right.
Re-pipe corroded oil lines in the mechanical room, replacement of the entire oil tank monitoring system, installation of two monitoring wells, piping of oil line from some tanks to the oil tank, excavation of dirt above the tank, new 32-by-7 concrete pad. And you total them all up and we're about 25 grand. Okay? At that point, that's like we go to the town capital planning committee, we determine that's, you know, top priority for the coming year, we go there because, you know, their deal is, stuff's got to be at least 10 grand, okay? And it's got to be for at least five years. Okay? And so, that clearly meets that thing and that shouldn't be coming out of the normal operating budget.
Right, fair enough.
I agree, yeah.
So, that's my thinking on that one. And then the other question I had, Patty, I'm not sure I understood correctly the situation. Item number three, it says install boiler tempering pump to prevent thermal shock to the boilers. 3,500, 3,650 each, total is 7,300. Says this is related to issues we have had in the school with cracked boiler sections.
Right.
We've had at least two instances where boiler sections have had to be replaced due to leaks caused by cracks. It's likely these cracks were caused or at least worsened by thermal shock to the boilers. Having the component to at least one of the two boilers recommended, if at some point one of the two boilers is replaced by high efficiency modular boilers as proposed, 75,000, those boilers would not require this modification. And I'm not sure, I think that's something different than what you're talking about getting fixed, the insurance paid for.
Right, the insurance paid for the cracked boiler. So, what Bob is saying is to prevent further future, we would put in these thermal shock protectors.
Right.
Sort of, from my understanding, they're like, you know, those things you use on your computer, so if the lightning hits, it doesn't.
Yeah, except they're on more than.
But again, as Peter and I were speaking before the meeting, it has recently come to our attention that the town, again, is doing a townwide efficiency study of the heating and everything. And I don't know where we're included in that.
Right.
And if there, why would we want to do all these repairs to the oil tanks and put these thermal shocks in if they're going to recommend us replacing a heating system? So, I think that we would be a little premature to do this without that final report. Having said that, as I was telling Peter earlier, the last time they did this, they wanted us to heat the building with pellets. And me and Bob were like, is there any other school district in Massachusetts heating a building with pellets? Because we're not going to be the guinea pigs on that one. And that, and that never went, nothing ever went anywhere with that.
So, I agree. What I'm hearing you say is that we have two options. One of them is to spend a little money in the medium term and then more money later, or if more money gets, someone spends more money to get a low volume instead of a patch, instead of a Band-Aid, then you can save money total. You're saying that the town is going through some sort of, I want to make sure that this is on that, that this is on the radar.
Well, I think this was a breakdown in communication because Bob was unaware and I was unaware that they were doing another efficiency study.
Okay.
Okay, so now Bob came to me and said, I don't know if we should continue with replacing the water heater if it comes out in the efficiency report that we should be doing something different.
Yeah.
And I said, well, I think regardless of what the efficiency report says, having a smaller water heater is going to save us money. And it's been approved and the town approved it and the select board approved it and the capital projects. And if they all knew this efficiency thing was going on, even though we didn't, I would think that they thought it was a smart idea to move forward with it now.
I've heard in my discussions at town hall, I've heard nothing other than, let's get this done.
Okay.
Okay? And, you know, even knowing that this whole audit of town buildings was going on, it was like, no, this one we've got to do it regardless because we're just wasting money, you know, with a whole bigger boiler operation than makes any sense. And so.
So, you're hearing smaller water heater?
Just for that, that one part, I mean, that's one of the two capital projects we got approved at town meeting.
Okay.
That one in the security system. And it got.
You're not talking about the temper, the temporary thing?
No, I'm talking about the.
The real smaller.
I'm talking about the big water heater.
Yeah.
Okay? That was going to be replaced with a much smaller one.
Right.
Okay?
Outstanding.
Yeah, everybody, you know, they're all in favor of it, like do it.
Outstanding.
So, I just got an email today from Sherri Patch, which kind of saying, she wrote, just the grant we discussed, let me know if you need help applying. Well, first of all, I don't apply for grants. And it's municipal energy technical assistant grant, municipal. Massachusetts Clean Energy Center seeking heat smart communities. And are you ready for solar? Well, so I don't know what she wants me to do with this. And again, I don't write grants. So, if the superintendent were here, I'd push it on to her or him and say, what do you want to do with this?
Well, we already got the, I mean, we're not looking at solar for leopard because we've got.
Yeah, so I need to talk to Sherri about this because I don't know what she thinks that I'm going to apply for because it's for municipals or regionals and Sunderland's not covered by a regional, all the frontiers. So, I'm going to have to talk to Sherri because I don't understand what she wants me to do with this.
Okay. Getting back to just the overall, you know, plan for the use of available funds, I don't disagree with anything you've done. The only thing that I'm wondering is that you obviously don't know yet what the amount, available amount is going to be.
Correct.
Okay?
We never do.
We never do. We have a, our next meeting's not going to be till September. All this stuff's got to be decided. Is there any sense in, you know, setting up some way that you just sort of, you know, let us know information and if anybody wants to, you know, complain to you and so on, that that can be done or if we can, you know?
And that's what I'm saying, even like pass a motion and say, you know, our recommendation for putting, you know, you know, some amount.
Back into school choice.
Into school choice and.
Let Ben.
And use discretion on, on the other items, subject to input from Bob and Paul and, and, you know, and what, you know, the needs that you know, in the building for, you know, things that.
So, here, motion for, you know, shades and carpet for the office.
Well, no, I think the motion, I think the motion should just be that you make a motion that I put so much money into school choice and the balance of the money to be used at the principal's discretion in concert with technology and director of maintenance and director of business services.
Right. And, and, and again, and even more into school choice.
What would you recommend for putting in school choice?
What do you recommend for school choice?
To me, that's hard right now because I didn't know about this oil tank stuff.
With the oil tank, I don't think we're moving on the oil tank in the near future.
Yeah, I, well, we need to put the gauge on because we can't do automatic delivery without the gauge. So, we've got to get the gauge fixed.
Okay.
Oh, they won't, oh, we can't get automatic delivery without?
Well, that's why our custodian's been resistant to it because the last time someone's gauge didn't work, when they had automatic delivery, they overflowed and then we had an oil spill and we don't want that. So, David's been very conservative in his order.
Science experiment.
I know. We don't want hazmat here. We don't want a hazmat exercise out here. So, that's been David's hesitancy to put it on automatic delivery. But if the gauge is fixed, then we have the automatic delivery and we don't have the problem that we've had in the past two years of we run out of oil.
How much just to fix the gauge though?
Does he have that on?
Yeah, it was on the sheet. It was on page two. It was, the number quoted was, with a refurb issue of 1,500 bucks.
Okay, so let's do that. Let's do the oil tank for, like, we'll do the oil tank gauge.
I think it was gauging sensors and stuff.
Right.
And I'm not sure that was a.
But he said, yeah, and that was refurbished, so it's not necessarily going to work.
It's at risk. It's a refurb job. It's not a no.
Device and sensors no longer manufactured. Some risk involved, but needs to be done.
Which is, I think, which led to the bigger conversation.
Right. What's the total number we're looking at right now?
Right now, we're about 80,000, but we have the bills that'll come in from today until the end of the year, which we don't know. And we know we have to have the fourth quarter billing for the central office services. So, I'm guessing if that would be 30 and we've got 80, we'd have about 50. So, I'm saying, I think we can definitely put 25,000 dollars back into school choice.
I was thinking, that was the number I was thinking, to say no less than 25,000 unless there was some extraordinary thing in here that we're not, that we have to contemplate.
So, if we can't, if we can't get the, so, I know Ben wants the carpet redone. So, if we, if, if we, if the only thing we can do is to put the 25 back, if we had to reduce it by getting the gauge and the front office carpeting done, are you guys good with that?
Yeah, yeah. Again, I think this is like, this is subject to just discretion. This is our kind of guideline for what we're looking for.
Would want to know the price, total price as well.
Right. And Bob's on vacation, but I know we use Mercer carpet, so I can get, I can probably get them on the phone and get them out here this week for, for an estimate. Are you going to be, I'll call you.
This week?
I'll call Mercer tomorrow and see when they can come out.
Yeah.
And do you have to give the town, when you encumber stuff, you have to give the town like specific?
I have to give a purchase order and a merger with the vendor. The only time I don't have to do that is if something has to go out to bid, then I make it out to ourselves and put out to bid for such and such. And then, then I'm allowed to change the vendor once the bid is completed.
Okay. So, from what I'm understanding now, 25,000, the motion, as we're working towards it's going to be 25,000, the school choice, finish the shade project.
Yeah.
Do the carpets and.
Technology.
The.
Oil tank.
Oil tank. And then after that.
Everything during the technology, correct?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah.
All right. So, but just.
And then I would, I would add, just as a, if you don't move on technology necessarily, if, if you start finding there's different things and maybe you're not ready to make that jump immediately, any remainder will be applied to school choice.
Absolutely.
Because you can always move that in the, in the fall for some, if there's, I mean, ideally, obviously, there's certain things that'd be nice to have them in place for day one.
Patty, what would adding electrical outlets fall under? As we increase the number of devices in the rooms, the power strips are filling up.
That's a problem. That's a good question. Remember, we get that same question because if we, if we go with the new proposal, our lease is up on the copiers and one of the proposals is to get rid of that huge color machine over there that costs a million dollars to buy toner for and replace it with a copier that'll be outside the office, which will stop interruptions from Mrs. Kitter's teaching, like by people coming in and using that. But we'd have to get new electrical out there and I don't have a price on that yet either. And you guys haven't made the decision. You're still waiting for feedback from your teachers if they like that. So.
It would, yeah, so it would involve potentially, we'll be, we have two copiers right now in our copy room, both black and white. And we'd be taking one of those.
And moving it down to this hallway right here.
Right, but making, or?
No, we take your color one out of the office and put it out here.
Right.
And then get rid of that monstrosity that's costing us a lot of money. So, you'd have a black and white.
I thought it was adding a second color copier.
You're correct. So, we would be at, so three. Because the money we'll save by not doing that, we can pay for a lease on the third machine.
So, yes.
But that would be an electrical cost to get that installed because we don't have a drop, a network drop there and we don't have a.
And I think the adding electrical outlets in the classroom, that would, you know, be a phased project.
Yeah.
As well.
Okay, so right now I have the motion that the school committee would like the following year-end priorities. To put 25,000 dollars to school choice and the balance to be used at the principal's discretion to replace the oil tank gauge, carpeting, shades and technology.
Keith, did you make that motion?
I was just writing it, so it may be easier.
So, I'll move that.
Second. And did that include blinds?
Yeah, I did put shades in there. Shades, blinds.
I would, you know, and I think, again, there's the word discretion in there. So, if there's something that we didn't contemplate, that's clearly, you know, priority, takes, you know, priority, then.
You've got to trust us that we.
We, exactly. That, that is embedded into this.
That's fine as well. Like if there's a building concern.
If we get a postcard from Hawaii, then we'll, we'll be talking in September.
If you come up with something, if you come up with something much different, maybe you could just send an email out saying, we're doing this. And that way, if I hear something from people in town, then I already know what's happening or something like that.
The only other thought that has come to mind at this point, some of our classroom windows are in need of repair. And that's on the two to five-year plan.
That gets pretty expensive.
Yeah, yeah, right. So, and I, and I was going to say earlier that, you know, as we've started to see, more and more things are popping up with the structural side of the building and the operations. So, that's just something we need to keep in mind. Yeah.
Okay, so can we get a vote on that motion?
All in favor?
All right. Can I ask one question about the school choice page or county that in the budget for next year, we ended up with an extra amount that we left in school choice for an aid?
And we think we already might need one.
Well, I didn't know where we stood on that. And I was hoping that we would be able to save that, but I was also figuring what the reality is.
The reason I'm making that recommendation is because Mr. Marcevsky thinks we may need another aid at this point. So, that has yet to be determined. But he thinks that we're going to already be spending that money.
Okay. I was sort of hoping we could resist that, but if we can't, we can't.
Again, another issue that's been, I've got a couple others that want to do some hiring and I need to get together with Mr. Modesto and get that, get those approved by a superintendent. I can't approve and hire for a school that's not within my curfew for it. I can just recommend whether there's funds.
Okay. And I wouldn't be surprised if within a couple of years, there's some move jointly, you know, by this, this school working with the town to come up with a plan of like. working with the town to come up with a plan of like dealing with these, you know, building issues that are going to be more than stuff that's fixed by ten thousand here and twenty thousand there. And that that's going to be something that, you know, we've got to get everybody on board, you know, thinking it's a good idea. And then you take it to the town, you know, you can get support for it. And so I think that'll be a process that's coming down the road. And whether that's a year from now or a couple of years from now, but I would not be at all surprised. That ought to be the process.
And how do we determine, well, one, it would be based on need, but as far as capital projects are concerned, like, what's, what's a realistic, I mean, this year was around thirty thousand for our two capital projects. What's, what's a unreasonable amount to ask for each year? And does that, is that dependent on other projects in town also?
And I think we don't want to forget, depending on how big the project is, that there's also MSBA money out there that we would get reimbursed for. So like, if we needed to put a new heating system in, we could go through the accelerated repair project. They'll do windows and doors. If all our windows and doors need to be replaced, that could be something that could be considered. And we are, our rate here in Sunderland is probably the highest of the four towns because our reimbursement rate is probably the highest than the other three towns because we have the highest free and reduced lunch population, which adds a lot of points to your reimbursement number. What we have been doing was, when you do the accelerated repair project, it's competitive. So they look, so we would, when Superintendent Barrett was here, we didn't want to submit more than one project a year because we didn't want to compete against ourselves. So we had done, we did the Deerfield roof, which was our most urgent need. And then everything kind of fell by the wayside and we're, and now Frontier's doing, talking about doing a big borrowing, not using any MSBA funding. So that could be something that you've got, we discuss.
I'm assuming that's coming, okay? And I'm, and I'm, again, keeping in contact with the folks over there that get involved in this sort of stuff. And, you know, I anticipate the process is going to be, we're going to get this whole building audit. And then when we sit down in, you know, late fall, early winter, the town will once again submit whatever it feels like submitting in projects. But the whole, you know, both Bob's plan plus what we get from this audit is all going to, all that stuff is going to be on the table. And then it's going to be like, okay, we got to start talking about what we're going to try and package up, okay? That we can work through this, you know, the state program to cover a sizable chunk of the cost and, you know, run that. Now, whether that gets done by, you know, whether that gets submitted, I think the next, I think the submissions, Maisy had something that said submissions for that have to happen in February.
Uh, no, December. Well, they open, they open in January. But you've got to start getting ready for that window to open in December by getting all your data together.
Right, and so I don't know, again, first thing is we got to get the report back from these other building folks that came, okay? And then, you know, I would guess that during this fall, there will be a bunch of discussions over the, you know, town, you know, townwide about what we're going to do with buildings. And, you know, I would guess that from the point of view of the school, that may well be presented as a separate package of stuff because of the financing possibility.
Correct.
With the state. And so it would be, and to me, having that possibility of getting substantial, you know, one of the questions always is, you know, first thing is, can we get somebody else to pay for it? Well, wherever that situation, we get somebody else to pay for a big chunk of it.
But, right, but the problem is, is that, where the problem comes in is the town has to do the entire borrowing for the entire amount. And then they get reimbursed by MSBA.
I don't think the town has got a problem with that. The town has knocked out a town. It's got a very good credit rating. And the town is also, you know, very aware of, let me put it this way, the town would, I can't imagine the town wouldn't be happy with doing that knowing that we're going to fix up the building and get payment from someplace else. If it's got to front the money first by borrowing it, I don't think that's a problem. I'm not worried about that. I'm more worried about, you know, we're going to have to come up with a big package of stuff here and see what we, see what we got to do.
Even if we file that, now we're in line.
No, that's, that's, the accelerated repair, we would know right away. And then if we didn't get funding the first year, we just refresh it the second year. It's when you go for the bill, like a, like a building renovation project where we're going to renovate the whole building or you're looking for a new building, which we're not doing. But again, even though I say that, and then I think about Ben, even though Nesdick's saying our, our population is going to be declining, Mr. Barshewski's got issues because our pre-K population keeps growing. This building was made for K to six and our pre-K to six, and he's afraid he's going to run out of room soon. And maybe we would be looking for a renovation because we need more room. And then that is a couple-year process. You got to get in line and you know that because you've been through that with him.
So it would make sense to have the study from the end, to then think about taking the next steps.
I'm just thinking about stuff like, you know, your major components of the building, including, you know, including windows or I don't know what else is going to turn up. That we got projects that got to be done, that are going to be more than the, you know, thirty thousand, let's say, that we asked for this year, like, way more than that. And then, okay, now we've got to get all our, you know, get, go through the whole process and getting the submission into the state. And if the town's got to front the money by borrowing, I'm sure the town will be happy to do that because it's getting a good deal. And that's, again, so anyway, I'll keep my, I'll keep, keep you posted on anything out here on that. Meantime, we're just waiting for that next report.
Identify, identify it all and let other people figure out how to prioritize and find the money.
Right, we're giving, we want to give visibility to all the problems we've got here with the building. Make sure it's visible and then it's like, everybody shares the problem.
I just got one question, back way back up in the finances about the cafeteria. Because even with Frontier and all the towns now, it's all interconnected. As a whole wide view of how the changes to the food services. Because I, Frontier, again, it looks like it's getting, trending in the right direction. So district-wide, everything together, the moves that we've made over the last couple of years, next year's an important year.
But there's going to, just always know there's going to be two schools that we're probably never going to make a profit at. And those are the two small ones, Whately and Conway. Because by statistically, we should only have one worker, but you can't have one worker. You need two workers. So we're always going to be, I don't know that we ever get to even a break-even point with them, but we can lessen the loss. And that is, our goal this year was to lessen the loss. And unfortunately, here, we missed. Everywhere else, we're lessening the loss. But again, we missed here only because of the one-time consultant cost. We were only paying ten thousand dollars and then this year that cost us fourteen thousand dollars. So with that extra four, if we didn't, even if we didn't have that extra four, we'd only be losing about a thousand dollars. And that would have been lessening the loss. So I think our numbers are up. I mean, the breakfasts are, and what really is surprising me and pleasing me is that our adult meals are really taking off. So Mary's doing a great job attracting our staff to eat lunch at the school, which really helps our program.
So have we voted? I can't remember. Did we vote on?
Yeah, you did. We're on the cafeteria team leader now.
Public comment. Yes, cafeteria team leader.
We had, I just, we had, basically, we all thought it was fine, but there was a little bit of concern about things that the selectmen were doing, about studies of personnel and about so on. And so we asked to delay the vote last meeting. And I wrote up what the issue was and sent it to the selectmen. And then I didn't hear any complaint, but I actually went to a meeting and talked to David Pearce, who's the selectman that deals with personnel matters, and said, I just want to make sure, do you have any problem with this? He said, no, this is fine.
So, buddy, and Peter, no disrespect, but they can't tell us what.
No, but this is, but this is, we don't want, we don't want to get in fights. Yeah, we don't want, there's no reason to.
This is not adding any personnel. This person already exists in the building. She's already performing the duties. So it's, it's just a change in the pay scale to compensate her for the extra duties that she's already doing for us and has been doing for us.
And I think we were all, like Peter said, we were all, we were all in agreement with that, just, but just because of.
We've been at a selectman meeting where they've been talking about this sort of stuff and we just want to let them know.
We just wanted to, to kind of just, right, exactly. Since we didn't have to vote on it in that meeting, we kind of wanted to get ahead, do the communication and then vote.
So that's been done and it's no problem. So I'm happy voting for it.
So we need a motion in a second to have the cafeteria team leader position approved.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
And then, I don't know why she broke it up, but then we need a motion in a second to approve the salary schedule.
And we didn't have any problem with that last time.
Right, so, yeah, so move again.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much. And this will be retro, well, it'll be retro back to, actually, it won't be because we appoint, we didn't have someone performing this role. And then we were going, the person we had targeted to take this role was going to leave us for another position. So we made her an interim and she's been getting the pay. So there, I don't think there will be a retro on this one because we have been paying her. But I'll have to check on that. But if anything, it'll be retro back to the date that we made her the offer because we didn't want to lose her.
Continue.
All right.
Go right to here.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I was looking for, the policies.
I have the next one as the non-union salary recommendation.
Oh, I thought we could vote it on that.
Nope, that was the team leader. Now this is.
No, we had two votes. We took a second vote on the non-union stuff, too.
No, the vote was the team leader salary schedule. Now we're doing the non-union salaries.
Okay, there were two votes for the team leader.
Two votes for the team leader. Create the position, create the salary scale.
Okay.
And then now we're doing the non-union.
Shall move.
And second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Now you're on policy.
Now we're on policy. All right. Let's see. And do we have those in front of us?
Greg, you were on that committee.
I wasn't. I've been on that committee.
So why you lead that discussion?
Let's put it this way.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion just to get this going?
Yeah.
I'm vote that we approve all the policies I submitted.
Second. Discussion?
So, yeah, so any insights or particular, particular insights you have for us?
So, let's see. All of this stuff is supposedly going someplace where it can be easily searched online. And that's going to make it, and.
It's already there. And then it'll be updated.
Exactly. I don't believe the thorniest issues are on, I think some of those have been punted. So these are all relatively benign.
Language changes as proposed by the MASC.
Exactly.
And they're the ones that host our, our policies. So if anyone's looking, there should be a link from the webpage. But if not, just go to masc.org and then you, you can find Frontier listed and you'll, Frontier Union Thirty-Eight, and they can pull up all the policies. And it's pretty cool because you can put in, if you wanted to know everything about busing, you can put in the word busing and it'll show you every policy regarding busing.
I think the only question was the GB one, and it's not included.
Yeah.
That was the major sticking point.
All right, so in that case, all in favor?
We're up to new business here.
And that would be the school improvement plan. Did you submit it last month?
Yes.
Okay.
And so what's the process? Do we, how, how, how much involvement does the school committee have in terms of, you know, we approve the plan and then it has to get implemented once, or it has to get, you know, you make progress towards the goals in the school improvement plan? And is that something that?
I think at.
Do we get reports, you know, on some schedule?
It's through, I mean, again, like, kind of through those committee reports that we get from Maisy. It is, I mean, school council, it's a, it's an interesting dynamic, this whole school council, the school committees. I mean, school committee obviously has been around for a long time. School council is more of an head reform.
Yeah, head form.
Nighy's kind of thing. It's, you know, to get, to have a sort of broader participation on some.
More of like a, an advisory board.
Right, right.
Right.
You know, for the school.
Right.
No, I would just say the, the process in these seven goals and coming up with these seven goals, one, one through three, those were, those came from our district audits that we've had over the past couple of years. And from, from those audits, the district came up with a strategic improvement plan. But each school is different and the, this, the strategic improvement plan was more universal. So I took that plan to the staff and our staff identified the priorities for, for our building. And so I then formed a building-based strategic team and we've met ten times throughout the year after school to focus on moving forward with, with various areas of that plan. And then the other four goals were developed by staff and council members.
And so are you looking for school committee involvement in this process other than just, you know, our reactions to the, whatever schedule you report to us on?
I think feedback.
Feedback, yeah.
Feedback's important. And if the school committee has their pulse on anything that would potentially fall under the umbrella and purview of the school council, then, yeah. Or if you want clarification on something, then.
So we are supposed to.
I didn't see a vote required.
No, it says a vote in there.
There's a vote, yeah.
Working on these going forward. These are the driving guidelines for teaching and learning going forward the next few years. That's the, that would be what this is for.
Yes and no. I mean, I think, yes, we keep this in mind and put systems in place to work on each of these areas because that will not, that will help the school regardless, whether it's on a school improvement plan or not. But, you know, I don't think what is necessarily on this plan is the only thing that the school will be focused on.
So I, the only thing I was going to ask is maybe some specificity. And I don't want to blow this up way more than it really needs to be. I love simplicity. Goal number five, create, maintain a safe environment for all SES community members.
Sure.
Like, what does that mean?
Didn't we have several backup pages last time that, again, I left them at home, that were like the details on each one of these? This was the summary page. I think there was a lot more.
So the bullet points for that were assessment of early childhood playground. Implement bullying training, create SES expectation, expectations school-wide, continue emergency response planning and drill, lines for classroom, windows and doors, fixed doors that don't shut properly.
Where can I find it?
That was the last.
Last. Page, maybe?
Yes, that was part of.
And you did include your security cameras on there.
Yes, this is a living document that can be. Yes, this is a living document that can be.
Add your security, add the addition of security cameras for your entrance, and thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Spend a lot of money on that.
Honestly, that may have been added since our last meeting.
So we need a motion to approve the school improvement plan, I believe. So I'll move. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
I guess key goal five wouldn't be considered a SMART goal.
Right.
Let's not even go there.
You can write all our SMART goals.
Keep my mouth shut.
Measurable.
Not gonna let you go to me and do it. Not gonna let you go to me and do it.
I am not a fish, I will not be baited.
Almost done.
What is SMART, what is it?
Specific, measurable, attainable, realistic.
Target?
Time.
Some people say timely. If you go and you look it up, it's not one acronym. There are a few different flavors.
I've Googled it, it comes up.
Timely evaluation. Yeah, yeah. I know, I know the context. I just never knew the acronym. Yeah, that's one of those. Reports? Is that right?
Yep, yep.
Capital projects?
Who put the capital projects on? Patty, is that?
That was you, but Bob couldn't come because he's on vacation.
All right, okay. So we're just, I've got another report that had.
Security cameras. We've had, Scott Paul is getting quotes from three different vendors. We met with one vendor last week, and Scott, the vendor, and myself walked the entire school, looked at what we had, areas of concern. And so they'll be putting that quote together. It's, Scott said the realistic timetable is sometime in the fall where that whole system will be replaced. It's just not an easy, you know, you go choose a vendor, and it happens the next day. And we wanna be, since it does cost so much money, we wanna be thoughtful about it.
Absolutely.
That's definitely moving in the right direction. As far as the other project, I'm not sure where Bob is with that.
I think Bob's ready, Bob's, I think, gonna be getting ready to go so that it's done over the summer.
My only concern was that they'd be done by, say, the first of the year, because I don't wanna be going to a capital projects committee meeting, and they say, you know, and they say, well, sorry, you know, we gave you the money last year, and you haven't done anything with it, so why should we give you any more? So as long as, as long as we're on a schedule that would address that, then that's cool.
Yep.
Great.
Any committee reports?
I've just got something I've got, I've been wanting to say the whole meeting, which is, I went on last Friday evening, I'm sure I wasn't the only school committee person there, to the big tent down there behind town offices, to watch the performance that was put on by our elementary school. And I just thought it was wonderful.
Yeah.
And I wanted to say that my appreciation to the whole school, and that, you know, the principal, all the staff in their various roles, parents, and especially all the kids that were doing it, your involvement with the town, okay, it was all, honestly, you know, I went there with low expectations, because this is an elementary school. You know, this is not a set of trained actors or something like that. And I was just really impressed by how well it came off, by the enthusiasm of the participants, by the enthusiasm of the crowd. It was a substantial crowd. I talked to a number of people there while, you know, it was going on, and I was getting really positive vibes from people. And here we were, it was a school, it was like, it was so cool to have the school a major part of the town's celebration of the three hundred first day. And, you know, it was just like, to me, it was like you couldn't have done better PR for the school to be doing this. And I know I talked to Ben just for a moment afterwards to express my congratulations, and he said, you won't believe how much work this was, okay? And I'm sure it was a ton of work, but when you put in all the work like that, it's so nice when it comes off well. And it really came off well.
And that wasn't me complaining, it was just.
It's just a statement, it's just a statement of the reality.
Right.
They've been working at it for a long time.
But there was a, and I'm sure there's also like tremendous education value in this whole thing, too. So it's not like just, oh, we're wasting, you know, we're sort of wasting time to sort of do something here that doesn't matter. I mean, there's a lot of education that goes on in this stuff. And I get, I was just, wanna express my thanks to the, to the whole school for doing that.
I think it just, it speaks to the power of collaboration. And when you have a bunch of folks performing their own individual roles for a, for a common goal, it shows what can be done. And that's not, you know, just the teaching staff at Sunderland, but it's the, our community members. We'd so many different people help out that helped make it possible. So it was, it was special.
And it was neat that you got the historical society involved, and, you know, so it really did, you know, it really belonged there. You know, it was telling a story of the history of the town, and that's what the birthday was celebrating, was celebrating that we'd been in town for three hundred years. And there was a school front and center. Very cool.
We, and that was actually part of my principal's report, but the in-town residents, Linda Lopaca and Mary Warner, helped contribute to the historical skits. And Linda gave us a bunch of different stories of Sunderland, a few of which we didn't include, with one being where townspeople were concerned about the huge number of geese that were just taking over the town. So at one point, they kind of boxed up the geese and sent them down river. So just, you know, thinking about what would that look like with acting that out. I think we had her, you know, kindergarten dresses a bunch of geese, but. So and then a few other people I wanted to thank, townspeople, Val Voorhees, who helped with costumes, Diane Merkomis, who helped with costumes, Kim Williams from Juke Center of Performing Arts, who helped with consultation. And she came to a few of our all-school skip rehearsals to help us teach the kids how to be better actors and project. Brent Hale, who did the program design, he designed the program and the large poster that they probably saw. Capenham, the library director. And then I also, we had twenty-two or twenty-three staff members that played various roles in supporting the project. So it was, it was pretty neat. And the students, you know, they did a phenomenal job. So it was nice.
I respect. How many of you managed to see it? I saw it up there. I think everyone was there. Cool.
Yeah.
Cool, yeah.
How about the fireworks?
Oh, my goodness. They were unbelievable.
Yeah.
Best fireworks I've ever seen.
Oh, you have good ones.
So, that's true. And I haven't been to like some of the big city ones in a long time, but like.
I wanted, that's what I wanted to come for, and I didn't make it. I didn't.
I thought they were extraordinary. And, yeah.
Do you guys know you made ninety-one? You know how they have the flash of solar? It said that the Sunderland Bridge was gonna be closed for the, for the celebration. So every night when I was going home, I would forget that reminder. I'm like, that's pretty cool, Sunderland's making that.
I thought it was great, too. I went down there, and it was way, it was more than I expected. And I thought that could've thrown the kids, too. I thought they did great. The whole production was fantastic. And as I was walking out, I was getting positive feedback from a lot of people. And it was this link of the school and the town. How, that's what makes this place really good, really special. Repeated from different people. I think everyone's going to remember that performance just for years. And it turns out, one of our school council members, Cindy Benjamin, she, at times this year, was speaking about Sunderland's two-hundred-fiftieth celebration, because she was in that elementary school, and how significant that was for her and her life, and how much of it she still remembers. So I think, I think we were able to provide our students with that same opportunity, which is pretty neat.
And the fact that, you know, basically, you picked up the whole school, and you put it down over there behind the library and the town offices, and, you know, just then did your business. And people didn't have to come some separate pace, like over here to the school to see this. It was just right there, part of the town, and all the other town celebrations. And it was a, you know, key part of it, so.
And as a staff, we held our first planning meeting last summer for the performance. And it just took many different forms throughout the course of the year. And as we hit, probably February or so, it started to kind of streamline into what we got. So it was neat. Are we just, I guess, moving into the principal's report?
Principal's report, sure.
Towards the end of May, we held our Sunderland in Action Day, which I spoke about during the May meeting. But we had a few different off-campus community service projects taking place, and that was at the New England Health Center Nursing Home, and also the Town Library. Many projects on campus, multi-in-the-perennial garden, transporting ten yards of bologna to the raised-bed vegetable garden. We had a parent volunteer, and he replaced the sheathing and the shingles on our early childhood playground roof. So that has a brand-new roof that'll last for many more years. And then flower planting, trash pickup. And so it's a very, very good day. And upcoming events, we have our final all-school sym tomorrow morning. And this is a, this assembly is always meant to honor our retirees and our departing sixth-grade students, though with no retirees this year, it's just gonna be our sixth-grade students. Spring carnival's tomorrow night. There's a dump tank, bounce house, face painting station, snow cones, pot, some potluck, dinner items, and then also the PTO's providing others items as well. We have our strawberry picking to Warner Farm on Thursday, June twenty-first. Every year, they, I guess, donation of strawberries for the entire school. And so we're doing a walking field trip to the old, the new site is on South Main Street, but we're going to the site off of Old Amherst Road. Field day is Thursday afternoon, and that is always water stations led by our sixth-grade students for some fun. And then last day of school is Friday, this Friday, new dismissal. August thirteenth, we have our new family welcome social. For the past few years, this has been for kindergarten families, and now we're really trying to extend it to all families who are coming into town and starting, started off at Sunderland for the first time. And then the first day of school is August thirtieth. Teachers report the twenty-ninth.
We're not thinking about that right now.
No. I didn't know, I wanted to include that on there.
Days are still getting longer.
Yes.
Not by much.
Not by much, right. Few days.
So we don't have any of the reports superintendent, do we?
Did you vote to approve the school?
The plant?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
So all we need is a motion and a second to adjourn.
Oh, dear, that's a hard motion to make.
It's been a pleasure working with you this year, motion to adjourn.
Check it.
Thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you.
You got a great school there, and it's a pleasure to be on the committee. It's a real pleasure to, it's just a pleasure to have, I mean, I try to engage people, like I engage some people at the Friday night thing. You just ask them what they think about the school, and when you get back, just such positive comments. It's real nice. And so it's just, you feel like, yeah, we just gotta, you know, we gotta, we still gotta keep trying to do things better, because that's life. But it's so nice that we're respected.
Yeah, I agree.
And that starts, that's what we do, so.
It starts with the.
It's the whole year the leader, but it's the whole staff.
Yep, Cat's waiting for our, our vote. All in favor? Thank you.